I mean, when you're ready. It's seven oh three and I call this River Edge Board of Education meeting to order. Let's all rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Brown, can I ask you to read the mission statement?
Sure. The River Edge Board of Education, oh, sorry, huh, wrong place. Mission statement, the River Edge School District is a partnership of students, parents, staff, and community members. We are dedicated to providing a supportive environment in which all students can reach their maximum academic potential, while developing as responsible citizens who respect individuality. Our goals are great students. Cooperation and ongoing communication exists between the school district and the community. School administrators and the board of education work together to assess and adjust procedures in response to new mandates and the changing needs of the community.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Danskie.
Here.
Mr. Herbst.
Here.
Ms. Just Galiani. Mr. Papiers.
Here.
Mr. Sim. Ms. Kang.
Here.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting, its date, time, and place have been delivered to the post office, the municipal building, town news, the record, and posted on the district website at least forty-eight hours prior to the time of this meeting.
Uh, we will move into a closed session to discuss a security matter. No action will be taken. Can I get a motion to move into close?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brown. Here. Ms. Danskie. Mr. Herb.
Yes.
Ms. Galiani. Mr. Papiers.
Yes.
Ms. Kang.
Yes, I will be back uh from close at about seven thirty. All in all, okay. I don't think so.
No.
It has been so long since we did it this way, right?
No, no, we don't.
Yeah.
So it's recording. We're good. To start. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for being so patient. Uh, we did have our flags salute and we read our mission statement prior to going into close. So at this point in the meeting, we're at discussion item A, public comment on agenda items. If any members of the public have a comment on an agenda item, please raise your digital hand or you can step up to the podium here, state your uh full name and address for our minutes. So I open it up to the public at this time. I don't see anyone on Zoom and I don't see anyone in person, so we will move on to. So special discussion item B, Summer Academy Presentation, uh, we will actually have to postpone that to our next meeting on September twenty-first. Mr. Warner was not feeling well today, so we postponed it for our next meeting, so that presentation will be given at that time. So we will move on to superintendent report, Ms. Donnie.
Okay, so um uh start by saying um thank you to, hold on one second, can you make sure Daphne knows she needs to um let people into the, from the waiting room. She needs to manage the waiting room. Okay. Sorry about that. Um, thank you to everyone for a very smooth opening. Um, it was great to be back in a post-COVID world. Our custodians, I mean, huge shout out, they just worked tirelessly. We had a lot of moves. Uh, we had about twelve, right, twelve moves uh in, within the district that they had to handle. Um, we had uh two construction projects in our wellness suites, um, and so they worked really hard and I could not be more grateful. Our main office staff, shout out to them, our amazing board office staff, um, our administrative team and all of the teachers who uh came in early and decorated those rooms and made sure that they had welcoming environments uh for their students. Over the summer, we had um an amazing amount of technology updates um that took place over the summer. Nevin Werner, um, Michael and Henry, our tech team, again, like it absolutely stellar job, they worked so hard. Uh, the work that we're doing in terms of technology um is not without its challenges. And sometimes in order to take a step forward, it means taking a sideways detour. And so I just want to ask our entire community that we embrace our challenges with technology uh with grace and understanding and patience. And I am confident it will all pay off in the long run, but we do have a lot of challenges with our infrastructure. Um, that's slowing things down and there, there's a lot under there that needs to be repaired so that everything can run smoothly. Carol Dweck uh coined the phrase, the power of yet, right? You've heard that. Um, and we use that often with our children when teaching them the difference between a fixed mindset and a growth mindset. And in her TED Talk, uh titled, The Power of Believing You Can Improve, Dweck mentions two mindsets people can have when approaching problems. She names these mindsets as a fixed mindset or a growth mindset. And a fixed mindset would be, I'm not able to solve this problem. In a growth mindset is, I've not solved that problem yet. And so as we navigate technology, whether it's our new visitor management system, um, different softwares that we have solving some very complex infrastructure challenges. I do want to just remind us all um of Carol Dweck's words. We can either complain that something is not working or functioning properly, or we can add that three-letter word and say um it's not working or functioning properly yet. Um, so a huge thank you to my tech team for working so diligently. Um, it really is, it really is working. Um, our progress is, is happening. Uh, those of you that came in person might have um seen our paperless sign-in and our paperless agenda. Uh, one of the new um uh New Jersey Student Learning Standards that um has been adopted are uh pretty um comprehensive climate change standards. And so I think when we want to model for our students, um, what we're teaching them. And so I think it is incumbent on all of us is to um, you know, to, to really try and model uh conserving paper. And so I thank everybody for the paperless um sign-in and the paperless agenda. Um, and there's a QR code over there which will remind you of how to access this meeting after the fact that will take you right to our district YouTube channel where all of our meetings are posted. I want to report on the interlocal agreement with the town. Um, the Finance Facilities Committee is going to report on some uh other items pertaining to partnerships with the municipality, but I want to report on where we are in terms of the interlocal agreement for field usage. Over the summer, I had resent Mayor Papaleo the agreement that the board's attorney drafted in twenty twenty in hopes that we re, might restart a conversation around that agreement. I was able to connect with uh Mayor Tom last week. And what he relayed to me is that the council is not able to have a discussion with us about the interlocal agreement because they are waiting on the recommission to see what their needs are. They're still waiting to understand what the extent of uh damages are at KBG. And uh as he explained it to me, these decisions need to happen before they can engage with us on an interlocal agreement. I am hopeful that we can have some progress towards that in October. Um, and so I will, you know, continue to communicate with the mayor and, and keep that line of communication open. As always, I welcome any community member who wants to come meet with me to discuss ideas for our field usage or ideas on how we can move forward that interlocal agreement. I'm available anytime for dialogues that will lead to ensuring our children in River Edge have the best facilities we can give them. And that is my report.
Any questions from board members? Okay, uh, principals report, Mr. Hensel.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So I guess the first day of school, while the rain was not ideal, it was so wonderful to begin the year and see all the spaces. Uh, the rain forced us to have an indoor recess, but we were able to get outside today. Uh, the initial plan for lunch was to go back to the lunch hours we had in two thousand nineteen and prior. However, after one day eating inside and one day eating outside, the second one eating some adjusting, which puts too many students together. Therefore, starting tomorrow, we are switching to a lunch schedule that lowers the number of students in our second lunch. Grades two and three will lunch at twelve, while grade four is recess, then we'll switch it. So um at twelve twenty-six, uh, grade two will have recess and grade four will eat lunch, and this will be the same schedule of last year.
Somebody give you the shortened version of that first paragraph. Good evening, everyone. Uh, we're going to switch back to last year's lunches. Too many kids in the two, three, four lunch. Um, we're going to go back to what it was from three years ago. Uh, it just doesn't, it just doesn't work. There's just too many kids, so a lot of tweaking, but it will work. So starting tomorrow, we will be switching that grade four will have recess and lunch below. While two and three is eating lunch, uh, grade four recess, and then vice versa. So just want to point out today, we had our PTO welcome back breakfast. I want to thank Ms. Danahy. I want to thank Chief Walker, and I want to thank PTO board for speaking to our guests. All in all, we had about fifty uh visitors today, so it's nice to finally kick things off uh with that, with that event. And then back school night is on Tuesday. It'll be from seven to eight PM. Thirty minutes will be dedicated to presentation to grade K to three, and thirty minutes will be dedicated to presentation four to six. Uh, information, specific information will be sent out tomorrow. Related arts teachers will be available in their classrooms between seven and eight o'clock. Additionally, parents will be invited to visit the new gym where they will be able to meet with various individuals and groups to learn about different resources that'll be available to them. In addition, I will be in there for the full hour. Um, I know the PTO will have a booth, CPAC will have a booth, we have some uh inquiries out to outside uh groups such as the library, etc., to see if they want to come and be there for uh for parents to come and visit and get some information about. So, thank you. Hopefully, everybody heard that. Good, great.
Thank you, Mr. Hensel. Any questions from the board? Yes.
The lunch.
Is that both schools that you're adjusting the times? No, just for Roosevelt. Yeah, I mean, we have different needs during lunch. Um, space needs way more students here, so this is just a Roosevelt thing. Yeah.
From what I, I know from here, it ran smoothly. That I think they were, they also at Cherry Hill went back to the pre-COVID lunches. So that condenses the lunch periods again, but it was very smooth.
Right.
Outside of the rain that disrupted.
I promised the kids yesterday, I told them, I said, it won't rain every day. Promise that. So, I altered my.
Thank you. Next, we have uh Board Secretary Report.
I could actually. Um, agenda item A seven, I spoke about this at the last board meeting. This is a resolution um that New Jersey School Boards recommended and everyone is recommending um for the public to urge you to express your concerns to our legislators regarding the projected premium increases for the school employees' health benefits program. Um, the premiums are not, the final numbers are not in yet, um, but beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three, um, the increases could be as much as fifteen point six percent. The amount budgeted, which was high from um all of our agents, was ten percent. So you can see this would have a big impact on the school districts. Um, increases in state health benefits would largely be paid by the Boards of Ed because employees that are enrolled pay a percentage based on their salaries. So um it would have a negative consequence on how the school districts can spend their money. What school boards is saying is that we may see, you know, us be, have to um lower some of our programs, curriculum costs and stuff to be able to make up this difference with the benefits in our budget. Not only for this year, which it would be unbudgeted for, um, but also um moving forward. Item C, one, two, and three on your agenda is the non-public agreement with Saint Peters and the Yeshiva for textbooks, technology, and security. As you know, uh, we handle the money for um the non-public schools that they get also. And D, three, and four is for the nursing agreements with Saint Peters and Yeshiva through Mid Bergen.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, uh, moving on to the president's report, um, I just want to remind board members to finish the self-evaluations for the board by the Sunday, that's so that we can have um all the responses from board members uh before our board retreat on the seventeenth. Matt Lee will be here to help guide us in our goals for the board. So if you have any questions um regarding how to access it, um, feel free to send me an email and I can help you with that. Um, I had the pleasure of joining the staff last week to, and speaking and welcoming them back, so thank you for inviting me. Um, I hope next year that our board members can also join, just because I feel like um only then did I see how huge our district is in terms of staff, and um I don't think we get like even a glimmer of that. Um, and so it's just really nice energy to be there together with the staff and just um seeing everyone kind of come back and just the excitement and the energy in that room, so. And that's it from me. Any questions? Okay, uh, moving on to committee reports. We can start with Personnel and Management that met on August tenth.
Yeah, so Personnel and Management Committee met on August tenth. The meeting was an hour and a half. Mrs. Danahy, Mrs. Napolitano, and Dr. Jaffe attended, as well as myself, um, Ms. Kang and Mr. Sim. Uh, we discussed the secretarial staff, power professionals, crisis intervention training. Techno, we, we had an update on technology, which you heard a little bit from the superintendent previously. We discussed the district setup of attorneys and um any future topics or questions that the committee discussed. So um we came to a few conclusions. Um, the first is that uh we are recommending, and this is going to show up in the recommendation section on the report as well, but um, the board approved the updated secretarial staff job descriptions. Um, and the second component to that is that the secretarial staff will be moving around based on the needs of the new job descriptions. Um, so we got those in our um board docs before this meeting. Um, so you had a chance, and I think actually it was in the FYI, might have been, that's where it was. Uh, I knew I saw it somewhere. Um, so you had a chance to look at those. The power professionals are going to continue to find ways to support and honor the work of the power professionals on our staff, because they do such a such a great job and, and one of the more thankless jobs in the district. Um, so, so we really want to find ways to support and honor their work. When it comes to crisis intervention training, um, I've heard Dr. Jaffe spoke a little bit. Um, and, and it was the committee's recommendation that the board approve um a threat assessment protocol and expanding uh handle of care training to specific members of staff that Dr. Jaffe um recommended. For the technology update, we are transferring to Genesis um for our item asset inventory to uh, which is expected to help our technological inventory process as we continue to get um new technology in the district. Uh, Bergen County Special Services is providing um great uh IT support, support so far. That was as of August tenth. I'm sure they're still doing a great job. There is going to be new visitor sign-in technology, which I, I've heard is, is uh, has been rolled out. And um the staff and visitor wifi is set up. So we have um a lot of technological tweaks and changes as Mrs. Danahy referenced in her report. We'll have an update in executive session uh on the district setup of attorneys um for personnel and contractual matters. The Summer Academy was very suc- successful. Unfortunately, we had to postpone the um, the report tonight. Um, and as of August tenth, uh, they were interviewing, they, meaning the admin, was interviewing for a vacancy on our custodial staff, which I believe was filled.
That was filled. Um, we hired Anna, what's her last name? She's on the agenda. But um what I'm really happy about, just to add to that report, is that we hired a female staff member for our custodial staff, which I think is wonderful for our students um to see, uh, to see that. She actually came to us part-time last year during COVID when we had to hire a couple extra staff members. Um, and she fit in really well with our staff at Roosevelt. I believe she'll be here. At, yeah, um, so we are happy to uh have her and also again to add a female to our custodial staff.
Thank you very much, and I think that's, for the most part, you know, that's what we discussed, the ongoing issue still under consideration are the, are the setup of attorneys and technology. And we, I already reviewed the recommendations, so I believe that's it. I conclude my report.
Any questions from board members?
Actually, I will say, um, do we want to try September fifteenth for our next meeting? That was next Thursday. I know I didn't, I didn't include Daphne yet, so Daphne, if you're listening, uh, hello, uh, September fifteenth at five thirty PM.
I'm here.
Will be the, the date, time, and place of our next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
All right, um, moving on to finance and facilities.
Yes, I'm going to turn it on. Um, so I have two reports because we met on August twenty-third and we met again this evening. So first, uh, August twenty-third's meeting, uh, board members present were Mrs. Kang, Mr. Papiers, and myself. Uh, and staff attending was Mrs. Danahy and Mrs. Napolitano. We discussed security recommendations from the Department of Homeland Security, site assessment, and those will be reviewed um in our closed session this evening following our meeting. We uh also discussed a meeting uh with, between the River Edge Police Department uh and Mrs. Danahy regarding um security recommendations, and um this evening, Chief Walker came and we met with him in closed session to discuss his recommendations. Update on the fields and interlocal agreement. At the time of our meeting on August twenty-third, Mrs. Danahy had not yet heard back from um Mayor Papaleo uh regarding the status of that agreement or his um availability to attend a meeting. However, we did meet with him this evening, so that will be in my next report. And then uh an update on the boilers. Um, we are going to go out for bid again next spring, correct? As the work cannot be completed when school is in session, therefore, we need to go out for bid again next spring, and the work would be done in the summer for the boilers. We also discussed, discussed the need for um an emergency uh plan, should a boiler go down, and that would be a repair plan, not a replacement plan at this point. We discussed the health premium resolution that's on the agenda this evening that Mrs. Napolitano reviewed. Water. The district received some questions regarding um our water safety. Uh, there are new regulations. Uh, what was the date of the, the change in the regulation? June, was it June? June twenty-second. It was a change in regulations. We've had um satisfactory conditions with our water. We don't know how these new regulations will affect us. We do, uh, although we had a waiver on um water testing, we did test our water in our, our water fillers or water fountains. Um, I, I believe they're all, are they all water fillers at this point? Okay, so water fillers, not water fountains. And um our testing all came back fine. Um, and we also uh put filters on those water fillers, and those are changed annually, and they have been changed for the school year. And um we will reach out to, uh, actually, we just, it was part of our discussion with the mayor this evening as well, so I'll report on the, the water. I'll give an update on the water um when I do my next report. And finally, um, there um is a house nearby to Cherry Hill School that we um are investigating. So, uh, and reviewing uh whether or not that is, is an option for us. So future topics are that we said we would like to report on security at, at every meeting moving forward, and I'll give you an update in my next report from tonight's meeting. Uh, we will also report on that every closed session. There is a follow-up on the interlocal um agreement as per Mrs. Danny's comments. And um we need to also set a, another date for a meeting because we need to discuss the findings of CUSAC that relate specifically to the Finance and Facilities Committee. So that was the meeting of August twenty-third. Then we met this evening at six o'clock. And the committee was all present, the board members were all present, and Mrs. Danahy and, this is the Polatano was president, present, present, sorry. And Mayor uh Thomas Papaleo joined us. And at that meeting, we did a follow-up on, on water safety. We shared the information with the, the mayor. And he had not yet heard anything about uh the change of the regulations, and uh we wanted to make him aware that he may receive some of those questions as well, and he's going to follow up. With um legislators as well as uh within his own um staff. Uh, the other um issue that we discussed was, just by way of a little bit of history. Many, many years ago, when we were doing a construction project um at June Court, we had stairs that went from the back of Cherry Hill School into June Court. And they were there for the purpose of construction and moving materials in, and, and then at the conclusion of the construction, they stayed open for a period of time. They are no longer there. They've been removed. They were in disrepair. And I don't recall how many years ago. Do you know how many years ago they were removed? It's about six years ago, approximately. Six years ago, they were removed. And we wanted to discuss uh with the mayor whether or not it would be feasible to um consider putting stairs in that location again, should any kind of um plan move forward with um a house. plan move forward with a house that we are are investigating at this point. And so the mayor did did let us know that he had checked on that and that it is feasible to move forward with that. And and those were the two agenda items. This evening, I did want to give you a security update. As you know, the visitor management systems have been installed and the infrastructure continues to have improvements. And as Mrs. Dan, he said, we need to be patient as our infrastructure improvements are happening slowly, but they are in fact happening. The administrative team met to go over the recommendations from the police department and the Homeland Security Site. Bought it. So that's the security update, and those were the two finance facilities meeting. We just need to find a date to meet again. So we'll discuss that later. Any questions? Okay. Never done two reports the same night.
I think just to piggyback off of what you said for CUSAC for finance and facilities, we need to I I didn't write it down, but I know there's something for each committee to review and make sure that we address those or put those on the agenda for the follow up meeting, just so that we 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 discuss as committees. Curriculum and instruction did me, but the report will come September, September 21st meeting. Yeah. Any other committees? Reports? Moving on to motions to be acted upon. Can I get a motion for E1?
I moved that the Board of Education approved the minutes of July 27th, 2022.
Any questions? Roll call please.
Ms. Brown.
I'm staying.
Ms. Danskis?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Papiers?
I'm staying.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Ms. Kang?
Yes.
Can I get a motion for A2?
Motion for A2 that the Board of Education approved the special milk pricing at a rate of 46 cents per day for the 22, 23 school year.
Second.
Any question? Roll call please.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah.
Ms. Danskis?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Papiers?
Yes.
Ms. Kang?
Yes. Any objections to combining A3 to 6?
No.
Motion to approve A3 to 6?
To approve items A3 through 6.
Second. Any question? Roll call please.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah.
Ms. Danskis?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Papiers?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Ms. Kang?
Yes. Can I get a motion for A7?
Yes, this is the motion. Wait. This is the motion we referred to earlier regarding the state health benefits for teachers and other employees. So move to approve A7 as stated.
Seven.
Any question? Roll call please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Danskis?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
I'm staying.
Mr. Papiers?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Ms. Kang?
Yes. Can I get a motion for A8?
Some of.
Any questions? Roll call please.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah.
Ms. Danskis?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Papiers?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Ms. Kang?
Yes. Can I get a motion for A9 through 12?
Second.
Any questions? For A11, how many students are attending the school that's not their neighborhood school?
Six at each school as of today. So 12 students in total.
12 total, six at each.
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Danskis?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Papiers?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Ms. Kang?
Yes. Can I get a motion for C1 through 3?
Motion to approve C1 through 3 as stated.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call please.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah.
Ms. Danskis?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Papiers?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Ms. Kang?
Yes. Can I get a motion for C4?
Miss, sorry, Ms. Kang may make a comment about C4. I just want to, and I should have said this in my my report, but we're approving all of the new curriculum. And I, there was an extensive amount of work that was that took place over the summer that Christine Marie and our Director of Curriculum led with so many of our talented staff members. And so I apologize that I didn't say that earlier, but before we vote on that, I did want to just acknowledge all the hard work that went into that.
Move to approve C4 as stated.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call please.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah.
Ms. Danskis?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Papiers?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
Ms. Kang?
Yes.
Can I get a motion for D1 through 4?
Move to approve D1 through 4 as stated.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call please.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah.
Ms. Danskis?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Papiers?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Ms. Kang?
Yes. Can I get a motion for E1?
Move that the Board of Education accept or regret the resignations of following employees as per the below table as stated.
Sir.
Any questions? I just want to say thank you to all our staff members. As sad as we are to see them leave, I think we're just thankful for their dedication to our district. Some of our aides have been here for over a decade, so just want to say thank you. Roll call please.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah.
Ms. Danskis?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Papiers?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Before I say, you still take the exit reports or interviews, you know, those people who are leaving.
We do. Karen Judge, our Personnel Coordinator, does conduct exit interviews. And if there's anything she needs to communicate to me, she does.
Thank you. Yes.
Ms. Kang?
Yes. Can I get a motion for E2 through 5?
Move to approve E2 through 5 as stated.
Second.
Any questions? A roll call please.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah.
Ms. Danskis?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Papiers?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Ms. Kang?
Yes. Can I get a motion for E6?
Motion to approve E6 as stated.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call please.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah.
Ms. Danskis?
Um, yes, and I I love the video. Thank you for for making that video of the new employees. It was really fun to watch. I have to give a shout out to our staff members who made that Lauren Proda and Caitlin DeVasto. It was really fun. If you haven't seen it, take a look at it.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Papiers?
I'm staying.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Ms. Kang?
Yes, I just want to say welcome to all our staff members. I know at our next, the 21st board meeting, we'll have a welcome new staff members at our board meeting, so looking forward to that. Can I get a motion for E7 through 18?
Move to approve E7 through 18 as stated.
Second.
Any questions? A roll call please.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah.
Ms. Danskis?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Papiers?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Ms. Kang?
Yes. Can I get a motion for F1 and 2?
Move to approve F1 and 2 as stated.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call please.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah.
Ms. Danskis?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Papiers?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
And Ms. Kang?
Yes. Can I get a motion for G1 through 10?
Some of.
Any question? Roll call please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Danskis?
Yes.
Mr. Herbst?
Yes.
Mr. Papiers?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
Yes.
Ms. Kang?
Yes. Is there any old or new business that the board wishes to bring up?
Yeah, I have a report on the County Association Leadership Meeting I attended last night. New Jersey School Boards periodically holds a meeting for people in leadership positions in various counties. They held the meeting virtually last night. So I just have a few things to report from that meeting. The first thing is that the annual workshop will be in person for the first time since the pandemic, so since 2019, correct? So it is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday this year, which is a little different, used to be midweek, but now it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, October 24th, 25th and 26th. And they have good registration and they are expecting a good turnout. And the nominating committee is being formed for the state officers. And so I'm participating in that process. Also, I wanted to mention Crestville High School. During Hurricane Ida, I believe, Crestville High School was flooded. They're in a flood zone. They were built in a flood zone. The high school had six feet of water in the building. And the building was destroyed. The entire building was destroyed and they could not have their students in the building last year. And so they had to make other arrangements for their students and they reopened yesterday. So the building is not complete, but it is complete enough that they can have their students back in and they are very happy to do that. And I spoke with Mrs. Kang earlier and I think it would be very nice if we sent a note. She she asked me email or like a real note. I said, whatever you want to send. But I think they would really appreciate knowing that we, you know, always support them and that that we're we're happy that their students are back where they belong. They are now, because the building is still in a flood zone, building a wall around their building. They have a temporary structure now, but they will be building a permanent sort of barrier to flooding around their building because they did not have another site. And so they chose to continue to to be in that same site, but they are going to create a water barrier around Crestville High School. So they are open. They're very excited to be back and open and their board has worked extraordinarily hard on this happen. They did have all of that rain during the for the first day. So that that I heard that that created a lot of anxiety.
It did.
The poor superintendent who I don't think slept that night. Yes, yes, and board members as well. Probably. Yeah, they they said, haven't we been through enough? We have February 8th on the first day that we're reopening. But but they they successfully reopened and and their students were back in in the building, even though there was rain. So that's that's all I have about the Cal meeting. And again, do we need to do anything? Do we, are we all set for October for the workshop? Okay.
I saw that the agenda for those, the workshops came out today, so you can preview like what sessions are when. There are a lot of really exciting ones.
Yeah, there are interesting sessions. Yeah.
It's almost like there's too many and you have to like
Well, they can choose. Yeah, they they had a very, they had a lot of submissions, more than usual. And and so it was, you know, a difficult choice and they're trying to present as many things as possible.
Right. Any other older, new business that the board wishes to bring up? So I know that over the summer, we were playing, not playing, but like trying out different things in terms of our board meeting setup. Right now, we have Zoom. We have our recording. And I think back when we had this discussion a few meetings ago. One of the things that I remember board members mentioning is about engagement from the public by having our recordings and our Zoom, having more engagement. Thank you for those of you who are here in person, too. It's it's really nice to be in person. But I just wanted to open it up because I know that something, we do have to have a Zoom account in order to have the Zoom. Are we currently using Zoom for anything else at school?
We're not. Google Meet interfaces with all of the Google apps really well, so we use that for everything else that we do in terms of remote meetings. The limitation with Google Meet for a board meeting is that for most of the board meetings, our capacity would be fine. But if we were ever to have a board meeting that we saw in the times of COVID-19, where you had hundreds of people logging on to board meetings, Google Meet likely wouldn't support that. That's not to say that Google isn't fast trying to, you know, compete with Zoom, because I'm sure they are. But at this time, the only thing that we are using Zoom for are the board meetings and it is, it does come at an expense of $2,000.
$2,000 a year.
Mm hmm. So we would be paying for that Zoom license simply for the board meetings because we do use Google Meet exclusively for everything else.
So I think one other option. I mean, we are recording this now via Zoom, but I know in the past we did it. We use the camera to record and then post it on YouTube.
We can. We can do a couple of things. We can simply just record and then post on YouTube. I stay here and upload it like when you guys all leave and I will continue to do that. It does not take me long, so it pretty much goes up as soon as the meeting's over and as soon as it loads. The other option that I'm looking at, and I I'm pretty sure it's, I'm pretty sure it's feasible, but is to do YouTube Live. So we have our YouTube channel. That's our district YouTube channel. So we could, I I'm pretty sure broadcast through YouTube Live. That way, the meeting would be live, but it's not interactive. So that's an option. So then as soon as the live is over, then YouTube just saves it as a recording and it's there and it exists. So that would allow people to watch it in real time, but not be able to make comment. The only way that we could have people make a comment from a different location is to keep Zoom or Google Meet, but the caveat is Google Meet might not always meet our needs.
Yes, I just wanted to bring it to the board as to what direction we should have moving forward. I know we've had this conversation in the past of Zoom recordings. I feel like we're doing a lot. My personal feeling is doing the live YouTube so that members of the public can view in live and members of the public can come in person. And then there's a recording of it so that anyone who isn't able to watch on a Wednesday night can always go back and watch it at their own time.
Can I ask? One, sorry, I was going to ask, when does our Zoom license expire? Because that probably plays into it, too. Okay.
Um, could, is it possible to get a survey to about what the public feels or the parents feel? I just don't want to make a decision in a vacuum. I know that I personally think Zoom has been an asset, even the 20 people on the call now, if I'm reading that number correctly, is more than we've had when we weren't doing anything and, you know. I'd like to also see the number of people that access that YouTube video.
You can. That exists.
Okay.
So when you go on to YouTube, you can see.
Okay, I'll I'll look at that. Because I think, you know, if it was just for me, I would say, no. We don't need to, but if, you know, I think we want to give, I want to give the public an opportunity to say, okay, Zoom is about to be taken off the table. Do we need, this is the time to speak up if you feel strongly about it?
So I just want to make a clarify, I just want to remind because it's the board's decision. It's it's not my decision. It clearly is your decision. But I just want to remind the board, just so we all remember.
Um but I just want to remind the board, just so we all remember that the it's public comment, it's not a Q and A in that public point, right? So just keep in mind as you're making your decision that if people are logging on to ask a question, that really, that question really should be directed at me, right? So if they're watching the meeting and they have a question about something, um I know that, you know, people do come and ask questions and, you know, we'll we'll answer it if we can, right? The board will, um or I will. But really, when we talk about the way that policies and procedures and the board works is if you're watching the recording and you're unsure about something and you want more information, I'm the person that is the person to contact. So just keep that in mind when you're making your decision.
With with that in mind, though, I think it's important with, you know, that it's not always, if you put the Q and A aside, it could just be, I would like a public forum to voice an opinion on something on the agenda or something that's happening in the school so that my neighbors can hear, so that my community can hear. And this is the forum to do that. If we just watch it on a video, we kind of take one of those public speaking platforms away from our community. So Q and A aside, but just to give our town an opportunity of, you know, to speak on school issues is what I also think this is for.
So uh technical issue, which is easier for us.
I think either I can manage either. I think as we're getting better at this, I mean, the thing is, you know, Daphne's here. Um you know, she's she's admitting people and she's on here and kind of doing some of the background like with me for me. Um so either is manageable. Um. You know, I I can handle either and I think I can handle either without technical assistance and having to chase someone to be here to do it.
Which is a a best way we can have the meeting at most places alternatively. The Cat Roosevelt and the.
Oh, I think we made the decision that our board meetings will always be here. We're just gonna have one location. Um. Just because I think it's, the acoustics are good, you know, but.
You couldn't.
That's for the sake of uh broadcasting.
For the sake of broadcasting, yes, we could do it here. The what will make it, but to your point, if we ever were to use the Cherry Hall multipurpose room, or we wanted to have it at Roosevelt for some reason, yes, Zoom would make that more difficult. The recording makes us, makes us uh able to have a meeting anywhere seamlessly.
What about YouTube Live?
Anywhere, because YouTube Live is just that camera. It's, it is just that camera that will do it.
Then uh I'll uh I'll be in favor of uh having YouTube Live. And then we have a meeting and uh force building alternatively as we used to. And obviously we increase uh um residents and pe- uh parents come to the school board meeting in person and the people who are not uh able to then watch the uh meeting online.
I think um I would agree and I don't think that um that making a comment um via Zoom is the only opportunity to make a comment. That um the agenda is published in advance. Um comments on agenda items um can be sent to, I I know other districts do this. They they have people send their comments and they're read aloud at the meeting. Um so that's an another way you can handle that is that people, because the agenda is posted in advance, people can submit their comments um and then we can read them aloud um into the recording.
That's very, that would be very easy to do.
Yes.
Um so.
And I I'm aware that districts, there are a number of districts as they transition back to a public meeting and away from Zoom. That's one of the things that they've done.
So what we could easily do for that option is on the website um where we have the agenda and the minutes, because one thing just that Daphne and I are doing is we made, we made that page a Google site so that Daphne and I now can upload the agenda and minutes and that's not something we have to keep asking Michael to do. You know, I'm trying to be mindful of the techn- technician's time, so easy things for us to do. So in my office, the two of us, Daphne and I can easily put the agendas and the minutes up. What we could then also do is then have a Google form next to it. So that would be really easy and that's again something that Daphne and I could do and manage um easily. So it could be, you know how we have the columns, agenda, minutes, it could be agenda, minutes, and then the form for comments if you wanted to submit them. So I hadn't heard of that option before, but that's, that's interesting.
I I don't think that's a bad idea, but I wanna, like, it sounds like you're taking stuff away from everybody else and you're just putting it on your plate. So I think we have to be mindful of.
I'm putting not Daphne's and she's she's. She.
Or Daphne.
He's really, she's seamless. That's a, that's a tiny small thing. Yeah.
I'm okay with it. I'm good with it. I'm fine. Thank you, though.
Um I I would ask if we did decide to go with YouTube Live. Um I think I'll, or would we be able to add something just to, it wouldn't, it would have never changed, but some directions on the website for the board meeting saying, if you have questions, you should contact your principal, your, and then here's their email addresses. And I know that stuff's all over the place, but as a parent, before getting involved in the board meetings during COVID, um I didn't really know who to go to for what, and even though it was all out there, I just knew join a meeting and I learned very quickly, oh, I can make a comment, I could say something. But if we take away the Zoom participation, maybe you're reminding people, hey, this is gonna be a recording, but if you have a question, email this or send your comments here, or maybe whether they're to be read or not read, we could decide that, but.
Yeah, that would also be very easy to do, because it's just tweaking the top of that page, you know, just be, we we work in a page of the website.
Right.
But yeah, we could make that very explicit.
Like a new parent coming into town or kindergarten parents would see, okay, this is how we participate.
We could do like how to participate in a board meeting with all the options, right? Come in person.
That's good.
Look at the recording, submit a comment. You know, there there are multiple ways to be involved, um which I think is the point, right? We want to give multiple platforms to people to be involved.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments, questions? So I think it sounds like Ms. Danskis and Mr. Sim and Mr. Papyrus, I think.
Yeah, I support a move to either YouTube recording or YouTube Live if you can pull that one, pull that off easily, yeah.
Okay. Mister.
It's time next week to.
Well, it's a board's decision as opposed to. It's, yeah.
So then, so then I can send it to the staff. Not.
It's not up to the public.
Well, it's not a thing up to them. Do we care to hear what they have to say?
We always, we always care. We, no, I, we always care what what they have to say, but but the bottom line is that um I think we have to remember what the purpose of the meeting is and that the purpose of the meeting is not to be a public forum. The pub, the purpose of the meeting is for the board to do its business. And we do that with the opportunity for the public to um make a comment to us. It's not meant to be a dialogue, um and it's not meant to be a public forum.
Comment, I don't think it's meant to dialogue, but again, I'm only one person, so I get my mindset or how I was thinking about it was. If the, I can view something in a specific way, but if my community and many of them feel something different, it pauses me to be, look and reevaluate.
Right, and that's why.
Information that I was hoping to hear.
Right.
But if that, that's what we're trying to do or making, if if my suggestion to that puts it, makes it sound as though I'm saying this should be a uh a community decision. That's not what I'm saying. So then, you know, just.
I I I had a lot of the same concerns for a very long period of time and I I wouldn't be on the board if it wasn't for Zoom during COVID nineteen, because that's where I learned everything about, decided I wanted to be involved. So I I agree with you and I agree with your sentiment. I know that I really want the town participation, good, bad, in between, agree, disagree. It's, I think it's good. But what kind of swayed my opinion is, so there's nineteen participants for, or maybe six or seven of them are us here. Some of, I'm on there, a couple of us are on there. And then the last bunch of meetings, the way I I kind of changed my mind was they haven't been participating. And I asked if we have something big going on COVID nineteen again, or something, God forbid, or something serious, could we bring Zoom back? And I was told, yes, of course, because it's something big that we need participation now. Like a gl- you know, a hundred people need to participate in one shot, because in my house, we have two working parents, you know, uh w- we're not able to attend in person regularly. No, I'm I'm actually, I'm actually agreeing, I'm actually agreeing with you, but I understand that it's, I I was conflicted, but I think for us to do what we need to do more efficiently, um that we we can try something different and, you know.
Can I ask a question um that I don't know if anyone's gonna be able to answer here, because it's sort of a legal question, but theoretically, like as a board member, if I couldn't attend a meeting, would I be able to zoom in and conduct? So that is another twist on this as well, as as a board member, I would not be able to zoom in and conduct business with the board. But members of the public can chime in with their comments.
That's right. If you're away, you could log on and listen, but you cannot interact with a board member.
Right.
As a board, you cannot interact as a board.
I tried that. So.
You do not.
So I I mean, that's, I mean, it kind of puts, you know, things in an awkward spot where, you know, like if I were quarantining or something like that, God forbid, I would not be able to chime in and as as a regular board member in those meetings, but I could, I could make a public comment, I suppose. Um so that's just another perspective on it as well, that I would be in favor of moving towards YouTube Live so that if you're in person, you can, you know, make your comment, you have your forum. Um but if if you're at home, you can watch things unfold live, you can send in your emails. We read all the emails. Um so that's, that's what I would be supportive of.
I think, I mean, I think I can say that collectively as a board, um we want to think about what's the best way to hear from our community. And but also at these sp- specific meetings, our first priority is to get through our board business, right? We only get to meet and and as a group make these decisions at these meetings. Um I think what you said, Ms. Don here earlier is that when we don't, when we're not having these meetings, you're always available to the community for questions and and whatnot. So um I think for me, as I'm listening to everyone speak, um you know, Zoom is just one way to, I guess, have some participation, but if we think about collectively as our community, I mean, there's close to twelve thousand people living in River Edge, and I think it only reaches a certain group. And I think by doing, I think I, you know, originally recordings, I didn't, I wasn't really in favor of, just because I didn't want myself to be on the internet. But I I do think it does reach a a larger audience. And really, I, for me as a board member, it's about getting the information out there and letting people know what is happening at these meetings, where you don't have to feel like you physically have to be here ev- at every meeting, because it's really just keeping our community informed of what is happening. So um with that purpose, I think trying YouTube Live and then going forward with that is um my personal um recommendation. And then I think as Mr. Papyrus said, if if we find that things are changing and we, for whatever reason, need to reevaluate this, we can always reevaluate the way we have conduct our board meetings. Um and that's always up to the board to make that decision too. I think if we always think about what's the bigger goal here, it's to really have our community be involved. And I think that's the aspect that other board members have spoken about is we like the interaction in that we have an audience, right? Um as opposed to being in a vacuum, so.
Uh what's the uh um medium you are communicating to the public uh by letter?
What do you mean?
Uh say uh uh like a co- a coffee hour or anything you are seeing the people in person or anything. So uh uh I mean, the concern that Mrs. Brown brought, uh can you have something like, you know, virtual town meeting, so you invite them o- online or, you know, Google Meet and then, you know, bring the concerns uh uh Mrs. Brown mentioned, something like that?
That's a good, that's a great idea. If I, if I, if my forums are through like a Google Meet, right? That allows people to kind of um participate from home. So yes, I will, I will do that. Um I haven't, I I've been trying to think about what I want those to look like. Um ideally, I kind of want to have like a theme or, you know, um so I will decide on what those will look like, but I will do them over Google Meet, which is a good idea, because then people can participate. The other thing that I I want to do is I want to also remember that, you know, this is the the, our school district is for the town, right? It's not just for, I don't want to only communicate with parents of children, um the the parents of the children in the school district, right? So um I've started to have a great relationship with the library. And so I think something I can do is, you know, have some display at the library with our YouTube channel. Um have the librarians, you know, maybe help, you know, some of our senior citizens navigate that or, you know, I want to make sure that that, like, people know where to find these recordings and it's not just for people. Um you know, with children in the school district. Still have plans, it's getting reef off the ground, so I'm hopeful that perhaps our community members that don't have children in the school um are the people that may want to um to get involved with reef. So I think if if some of the larger community can watch the meetings and figure out how to do that, and so I can kind of um work with other community members to spread that message, you know, that will be helpful also. So the recordings can be good for that too.
Any other comments or questions? So it seems like, to sum it up, most of the board members are in favor of moving forward with YouTube Live and recordings on the district website. Okay. And then um perhaps we can have that. Are we in favor of having like a Google form or such on the website if people want to submit comments to be read at board meetings or?
Can we just review our policy for public comments?
Okay.
When it comes to that, because there would, I feel like there has to be some sort of screening process.
I think there is.
Caleb, our personnel management committee meeting, we, why don't we put that on the agenda?
On there, yeah.
So we'll, we'll look at it then.
So that's next week, so we'll have a recommendation by our next meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, but it might also be also time, like it's like when they need to submit it by in order to have it read, yeah. So it should be in there, so we'll review that.
Also, you can make the Google forum timeout, but I am, um I thought we would work in kind of technology into the personnel and management and s- school security and finance facilities. So um I think when when we have that meeting, Caleb, I'll have, I will have done sort of like a test run of the YouTube Live. Um so I'll be able to report to the committee on how that worked and then I'll think about how to make that website screen with the Google form, so I can report on that at the committee meeting and show you kind of how it works. And that would be the appropriate place to do that, I think.
Yeah.
That'll be good.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Wait, can I ask that a quick question? Good question. Do we have um an agenda for our retreat?
We do. I'm gonna send out an email with our schedule.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you. That said, if if any board members have ideas about that, I mean, communicate to un, because, you know, we did work on it, but we could tweak it if need be. But.
Okay.
I think I'm excited about some of the things we have on that.
We submitted.
Yeah, so I tried to include, kind of like put it all together as to what could be um helpful for our full board. Um so hopefully, you know, I'm I'm excited for the conversations that we'll have at the retreat, so um I will send that out this week.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Um if there's no other older new business, at this time, I will open it up to um public comments. If you have a public comment, either in person or Zoom, please raise your digital hand, or you may step up to the podium and state your um full name and address. And I will give you three minutes to speak. I see uh. Yes, please feel free to step up and then.
Uh my name is Francois Michel. I live in one thirty six Compton.
Uh, my name is Francois Michel. I live in one thirty-six Continental Avenue. I just wanted to ask a question to Miss Stensky. Um, you spoke about um investigation of a home. And I just want to have some more clarification about that.
Um, well, I'll share with you whether I can.
Sure.
Um, when I I'll just speak in general terms first, um. Oh, sorry, I wasn't on.
I'll start again. I'll just speak in general terms first, um. So when there is a property adjacent to one of our schools. We often look at whether or not um it would serve a purpose for meet a need for the school, a a house that becomes available for sale. Um, not just any old house. Um, so um there is a a house that is um in the proximity of Cherry Hill School. And so we are um looking at whether or not it would be uh anything that would be feasible.
Okay.
For us, for the purpose of um. Space.
Oh.
For for the school.
For the staff.
Yes, not not for students. We're not looking at student places. Is that is that what you were concerned about? No, no, we're not looking at, we're not looking at. Um, a place for students with a uh this particular. Location. Um, and the board will discuss it in more detail in our closed session because it is a potential contract. And so it falls within uh the parameters of discussion discussing in a in a closed session, but it really is is truly only in the discussion. Phase at this point, so we haven't even gotten. Any further than that.
Okay.
Um, but we are not, I I can share that I believe that we're not looking to to put any student programs there.
Okay.
Okay, no, that's a fair question.
And a beneficial um concern I have, I mean, I'm hearing you guys talk about whether or not we should we should continue zoom or not, you know? I I mean, as a parent, I feel that we should have zoom personally, only because again. We have, you know, my wife is working, I'm working. And, you know, by the grace of God here, you know, because it just happened to have a lifeline tonight, you know? But um. I've been attending other um forums. And I think that, you know. It's always good to hear other people's questions. And because I may not think about. You know, certain questions, and when I hear it live, it's best for me to hear it because. I may have other questions follow up. So I think like. This whole. The um board bed meetings, we should have it as interactive, maybe not just like having the board talking and just us listening. We need to communicate and have a dialogue. You know, that's just my opinion. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Um, I think um I see. Mister or Miss Flores on. Mister Benetti or Miss Flores on Zoom.
Hi, yes, good evening. Um, Melser Flores, seven eighty-seven Kinder Comac Road. I'm here to give my opinion as well for the Zoom. I don't think it should be something that. You guys um shouldn't be uh consider without having the community's. Uh, opinion about it. I think Zoom has been really great the past few uh years that we've been on. We've been more active. As well in the information. Um, I think it's just continued to be interactive and participant. This is an open channel with um. The community that you will be closing and depending on the policy limiting our questions, um the minutes never match. Um, you know, we had um. We had a survey sent out recently, which the board made a a decision of the aftercare based on the the parents and the community's. Survey and that decision was made through that. I think that this should be. Considered as well for the community and send to the parents a survey asking. You know, what will be more beneficial for everybody, right? Because at the end of the day, the board. The board business is all of our business and we should all be involved and it's public meetings, so that that's. That's just my two, my two cents. Like, for example, right now, I'm actually away. And I'm here on the Zoom. Um, you know, listening, listening to you guys, and if just like right now, I'm able to 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 be able to provide that. If I wasn't here and I listened to later, I wouldn't be able to give you my opinion now and then a decision will be made later without you hearing for the public. Or for the rest of the public to hear. Thank you.
Raise the hand again, I don't like to speak.
Thank you. I'm I'm sorry, John Benetti is gonna speak now too for his three minutes.
Hello, John Benetti, seven eight seven Kinder Comac Road. Uh, I have a few questions in reference to the Saint Joseph's and the Shaheba School. What's the dollar amount that it's costing us for the books and the other technology that we're providing to them? The nursing and anything else? What's what's that dollar amount? Considering that we're bickering over the fact that the Zoom costs two thousand dollars? And we want to get rid of it because it's a two thousand dollar cost. What's the cost that we're paying out for all that work that's being done over there and all the services that we're providing for over there? When both of those schools are private schools for profit. They don't, they don't let the kids go there for free. You know? So I'd like to know what what that dollar amount is, and I'm sure the public would like to know too.
Mister Benetti, those the costs for those schools, those are monies that are given to our district and we just. Create the purchase orders for them. It does not cost the district any money at all. We just.
Okay, so then. Then who's paying you to do the work? Because you work for the River Edge Board of Education, correct?
That's correct.
Not for Saint Joseph's or for the Shaheba School. So who's paying you to do that work for them? Are we, are we receiving monetary money from them?
No, it but it's a requirement of every school district, so every district does this. If they have a non-public in their region. That you handle the monies for them and purchase do the purchasing for them. So it's different in every town depending on um if they have the non-public schools.
So how much money are we receiving from the districts for these schools? You know, that we're now losing from Cherry Hill and Roosevelt Newbridge that we should be receiving for us.
None, it does, it's not based on that, it's based on their their funds. It's not commingled with our funds, it's a separate account.
But you're doing all the work for them and you're an employee of ours.
That's correct.
The River Edge School District. So who who's who's paying you for your time and and to do that work for them? Is that being funded from the state through the grants? Is that how it's being done?
No, it's just an obligation that you're given if you have a non-public in your in your uh district.
So every public district has an obligation to provide this for their non-public schools.
That's correct.
Town.
Yes.
For River Edge, we have the Yeshiva and Saint Peters. If we had more non-public schools.
We've had stepping stone in the past, there's other schools.
It's part of the job description that you're being compensated for already.
It is a state requirement, but I will also say that even if you are in a town and you don't have non-publics. There still is work that is required of you. Per state law. So in a district that when I worked in a district that didn't have any non-publics in the school. There were still things I had to do with funds. For the children that go to non-publics, not in my town, outside of the town. This this is a state requirement. This is not anything that we, this is all governed by law. This is not anything that we have any. Um, it's not optional.
Perfect. I'm I'm glad that all these questions were answered, but the only reason why these questions were answered is because we were on Zoom. If we got rid of the Zoom, I would not have those questions answered. The public would not have the answer to those questions either. So getting rid of Zoom, I think is a very big mistake. I think the same, this like 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 my wife said, the same way that you treated. The after, the aftercare program, it should be done the same way. A survey should be sent out to the parents. As well as the non-parents that are voters in River Edge. You're right, the residents. And the voters of River Edge should all receive this survey to see what works out best for all of us. Because the public are the one that voted in the board members and everybody else sits there. So remember, we're we're a community. It's all about the public. We're we're here for a reason. We're here because we want to know what's going on. We want to be informed, and so does the public. But I thank you for my time. I appreciate it.
Mister Benetti, thank you. Thank you. Um. Anybody else on Zoom or in person?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
You could send this question in via email and.
Because it was on the agenda.
Right, so. Uh, there is a way to get information. That's what we were talking about and and.
I've been, I've been.
Mister Mister Benetti, you don't make a great case for keeping Zoom. If you keep interrupting me. Not even letting me answer when you've had your three minutes. So I'm trying to respond. Uh, so that the public understands that there is a way and that the board. I think expressed, I can say I express. Concern to allow participation. Uh, so that we can conduct our business appropriately and 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 our citizens can get information, but there is a way to do that. Right.
All right. Thank you, um. Do we need to move into close? Yeah, okay. For contractual matter. All right, so can I get a motion to move into close for contractual matter?
Second.
All right, um, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We will be back in this room on the twenty first. Um. Thank you.
All right.
Oh, we'll call, sorry.
You could say all in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any approach? Do visitors have to text by or no?